Now Ben, what did you just say? I couldn't hear you. Excuse me.
Huh?
What'd you say? You called the meeting to order?
Called the meeting to order.
Oh, okay.
Well, have a public comment.
No public comment?
Mine'll probably wait until there's other discussion if that's all right because my understanding is there's some comments that are going to be directed my way so I'd like to be able to respond to them.
I'd like to, Ben, and we were responding to them last week too. I did, we did.
Is this a public comment?
Yeah, it's a public comment.
Any other public comment?
Um, first of all, I appreciate the board allowing me to kind of speak about some of the things that were discussed last week. Um, I'd like to apologize for some of the information, maybe not having all the truths. However, there are some ways that we can improve this and first of all, I'd like for the board to know that we will continue to work with the Edgar County as speaking on behalf of the 911 Board. We'll continue to work with the county board and the sheriff to help support the emergency response in Edgar County and ensure adequate services legislation provides. We are committed to assist and continue improvements and dedicated to staying up to date with the latest technology in order to provide the best possible emergency telephone system for our users and responding agency. And with that being said, I want to look at some facts here because some of you might not know how or understand how the 911, the legislation covers us. We are governed by the Illinois Compiled Statutes, the Emergency Telephone Systems Act, and no other nonprofit or for-profit organization to include NFPA and ISO. We, meaning the 911 Director and/or any board member, have never been visited by an ISO field representative since I have been on the board. It is possible the representative visited during the last sheriff administration and refusal to provide documentation or answer questions led to inadequate scoring of emergency communications section of the fire alarm survey. And we are in charge of the system and not the telecommunicators and we do not hire, train, discipline, negotiate with any dispatchers. This is kind of what we was talking about before whenever we were talking about, you know, the responsibilities of the sheriff and the telecommunicators, who they report to, the reorganization of that. Mr. Allen's first documented visit to 911 came in February of 2011. He requested 911 to buy some pagers and maintain them and we declined him. And ISO is a for-profit organization that collects and sells data to insurance companies. It's founded in '71 in a merger of smaller underwriting service organization. And ISO has developed enormous databases of information about hundreds of millions of individual insurance policies. So basically what they do is they are a for-profit organization that collects data and sells it to insurance companies so insurance companies can say he raped. That's basically what ISO does. And the NFPA is the National Fire Protection Association. They were formed by a group of none other than insurance companies or firms with the stated purpose of standardizing the new and burgeoning market of fire sprinkler systems. And now the scope as of the NFPA's influence grew from sprinklers and fire extinguishers to include building electrical systems and now we're finding out telecommunicators, I guess. And I got that information off the Internet, done some research and that's the source of that. Going back to last week's meeting, Kirk stated he first brought this up five or six years ago and then he brought it up to the current chairman's attention, which is me, and that's a lie. I spoke to Kirk on this on one time and that was a couple of weeks ago, right after he was here, maybe last week. And in his article, I believe, Kirk stated that the current chairman knows nothing about ISO. I've worked for a company for the last 15 years that's ISO certified. I know what ISO is. Maybe I did not know that ISO was overseeing our telecommunicators. Maybe I had no knowledge of that. I'm not going to lie about that. But I know what ISO is and I know what they're for. At 7:22 in that video, Mr. Allen said he's been through it on the phone a half a dozen times with Troy and it's fallen on deaf ears. I, that's a lie. I probably haven't spoken to Mr. Allen a half a dozen times in the last three years over the phone. It affects everybody's homeowner's insurance. Now this is something that really hit true to me and I'm sure some of you done some research, but this hit home to me. It does not affect everybody's insurance. I worked as, I'm on the volunteer fire department in Hume. We had a chief on our department for many years that didn't believe in government oversight insurance or anything like that. So anytime somebody would come and want to do a survey, he refused. Well, by doing that, we had, we were labeled as a nine, basically as barely even having a fire department or not having one. Jeff Keyes took over as a fire chief and one of the first things he wanted to do was help lower our ISO rating, which is what Mr. Allen's working on with his department. And I helped Jeff a little bit on doing this, some of the tests where you had to flow water, go to the farthest point, do that. And I kind of knew what was, you know, what we were doing, but I didn't realize the total effects that it would have. But we did make Hume a nine down to a seven, which has saved a lot of people money on their homeowner's insurance. But from a nine to a seven is like 20 to 35 percent savings on their insurance. If you look, do some research on the Internet, you know, there's a broad range, but this saves a lot of money. My neighbor was even bragging about it. So I called my insurance man because I didn't save any money and I have State Farm Insurance. State Farm's the largest U.S. insurance company for homeowners in the United States. State Farm uses a regional rating in all the states unless it's required by law. I saved no money and it was explained to me at that point, probably eight years ago, I'm guessing, that it's done by a regional basis. They take their total loss and, you know, in that area and that's how they give you your insurance. So it doesn't affect everybody. And that goes on with that other comment that able to literally put money in every person's pocket. It's not every person. The insurance service office, at 9:20 in that video, Kirk says that we could call them and they'll bring somebody out. The day that I found out about this information, and I'm glad that Kirk brought it to your guys' attention, I wish he would've brought it to our attention, but the day that I found out about it, I called the insurance service office. And it was really easy to get a hold of them. I looked them up online and I spoke to Mrs. Santiago and to ascertain some information. I specifically asked if they would send a field representative out to reevaluate us and go over some things so we had a better understanding of what we were being graded on. And she stated they would not for their schedules are busy and they were supposedly just there And they, and Kirk stated that they did the 911 when they did his fire department in the fall and that's not when they did it because they didn't do it at all, to our knowledge. I think they took their information from a national database. And Kirk also stated, and he stated this to me over the phone, that Nanette receives a copy of everybody's ISO rating. And Nanette has not received a copy of the ISO ratings and we were trying to figure out why she's not receiving those, if she is on the contact list, as Kirk states, why she is not receiving those. But it's the first that we've heard of anything to do with that. And this is something else where I wanted to go into. The county sets the budgets and provides for dispatchers to the sheriff's budget. If you guys remember back in the day before 911, initially those dispatchers just supported the law enforcement community. That's all they did. But when the 911 system was started, it was decided that the county would support the EMS agencies with their dispatchers. However, the county law enforcement has not adopted NFPA or ISO standards, but the local fire departments adopt and take part in ISO standards as a community service. Part of the ISO standards for the fire departments is an assessment of their emergency communications, as we found out. And since the county board decided they would notify departments, they are now being asked to add resources or money to lower the fire department's ISO ratings by adding resources to drive down ISO ratings, which is a good thing. I believe it is a good thing that if the county board can support that, to drive down everybody's ISO ratings in this county and support the fire departments, that's great. But it's not required by law or in the legislation that they do that. And I believe, you know, Kirk came here to talk about that because he believes that it's 911's responsibility to spend the money so his ratings by ISO drop and we all need replaced because we're incompetent. Well, remember that we follow under the Illinois Compiled Statutes and the legislation that's given to us. Nothing about ISO or NFPA. But I personally think, under my opinion, that if he's so concerned with the dispatchers or if he wants to threaten, coerce, or intimidate, that he takes his political views and puts them in action, he may not be able to use his department budget to increase his water mains, but he can hire his own dispatchers, train his own dispatchers and make sure they are trained, the NFPA 1061 standards. I've looked at those standards and it's going to take a lot of resources to bring those. If we do it to NFPA standards, to the T, it's going to take a lot of resources and money to do that. Those NFPA standards, just so you guys know too, cost money to go get. You can view them. I couldn't print them off. I couldn't do anything with them and I do not, I did not pay for a subscription, but it's all about the money. But it seems like that Kirk wants to ask for more government, more spending and more regulation from all the county taxpayers because if the county takes on that role, it definitely costs more money. But while doing some research and the facts, Kansas Fire Department has the highest tax rate of any fire department in the county, the highest tax rate, including Paris. If they, if Kirk wants to come up here and/or any fire department should come up here and complain about the service that's provided by the county, then I believe that they should do something about it, provide their own service. For a while, Crispin had their own dispatcher. Paris PD has their own dispatcher. It could work the same way. And then that wouldn't be coming in to check the standards or check our compliance with NFPA and ISO at their county. This other page is just about the PPC, the Public Protection Classification, how it's done, ISO's testing, how the PPC program works. And one of the things that really bothered me, and I checked with the ISO mitigation, is they said that they would send somebody out to check our 911 system. And I don't believe they ever have sent somebody out to get all the information, so therefore that led to those scores that Kirk was talking about, zeros. Then I also done some research on the line about some other chiefs in bigger cities talking about ISO ratings, you know, whether or not it's worth spending the money to upgrade a tanker from a 2,000 to 3,000 gallon tanker, spend quarter million dollars to save 1% or 1 point on their ISO. So there's some information there that you can read that about. But on this fire alarm survey, it says, "During this evaluation, an ISO field representative will interview officials responsible for call receipt and call processing of fire alarms and conduct an onsite evaluation of all relevant communication centers if necessary." That never happened, to my knowledge, to Nanette's knowledge, to any board member's knowledge of 911. Now whether that happened through the sheriff's administration prior to us and we never found out about it, I don't know. But my request to have a field representative come out to reassess our communication center has fallen on deaf ears. But we are working on trying to gather the information to send to ISO because I did speak to Ms. Santiago and she stated that if we provide the information, she will be able to lower those scores. However, when you look at this fire alarm survey, they still need to send a field representative out to make sure that that information's accurate and the data's being collected. And as Kirk stated, I believe, you know, Kirk does know more about the ISO than I do with the fire departments. That's his job as a fire chief. I believe that the ISO ratings do impact your homeowner's insurance or at least probably a majority of homeowner's insurance. I don't know how many people in Kansas Fire District have State Farm, but I can tell you State Farm does not, it does not affect it. And also a lot of other smaller insurance companies do adopt State Farm's ratings, you know, if they're real small companies. But it's something that we should do as leaders of the community of the county. If we can drive that down through our telecommunications center, we should do that. But as far as to put the blame on 911 and the knowledge, I don't feel that that was right, to be blindsided with this information. But we will continue because, again, 911's regulated by the compiled statutes, but we will continue to work with the sheriff, with the county board, to use whatever resources we can to make sure that those standards, those NFPA standards, those ISO ratings do get lowered for the whole county. It's not going to happen overnight, but it will happen. And in summary, again, I'd like to say that we will continue to work with them. And it also, from that last meeting, you know, as leaders of the county, I kind of wish that with leadership that there would be a little bit more protection, I guess, so to speak. Anybody can come up here and speak lies and ask for replacements of the whole board and call people incompetent and not know what they're talking about. But as leaders, I would hope that you guys take the stand, to stand up for the people that you've appointed and to assure the public that we're doing everything that we can and if there is anything that's wrong, then you guys will be notified of that or if there's any errors or anything going on. But for Kirk, it sickens me too because I have spoken to Kirk Allen on the phone, to come to the board, to you guys, instead of coming to us. You know, I know he stated he's came to us several times. Kirk backs everything up with evidence. I would ask to see that evidence of him coming to our meeting. That's it. But I will, I have nothing against Mr. Allen personally. I have nothing against Mr. Kraft personally. And for any leader to say, of any board to say that we wouldn't take his idea and try to improve for the whole county because this came from him, that's an all-out joke because we're above that and I have nothing against him personally. However, if, you know, if something becomes personal, then it becomes personal. But it has nothing to do with, it will not affect the 911, the emergency telephone system or the service that's provided to the citizens of this county, as long as you have the board members and the director that you have. We've never had a problem with that, with somebody getting through to 911. There might've been some address problems, but getting out there. But there's never been a problem with answering the phone when it rings and getting somebody on the other end. And we will continue to make sure that that level of service is as they want. Is there any questions?
Troy, do you have any more copies of those?
Two, you have this one.
Thank you.
Bye. That was an edited version. I want you to have a second. Everybody else?
I'm gonna make more copies out here if anybody wants any more.
We still on public comment?
I think we're gonna go back on public comment.
Well, that was a public comment?
That was a report from 911. That's our.
Go ahead.
All right. Offhand, public comment, I know nobody wants to answer questions, but do you know whether or not we're doing generator testing on a regular basis now?
Yeah, and you've come to 911 meeting, yes.
Do you know what that schedule is?
Yes, we do.
What is it?
I'm 911, didn't find out, but yeah, we do.
How often do we do it?
It's tested every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday?
Weekly test.
Right.
Quarterly inspections, annual inspections.
Okay. If I could have a few minutes, I would appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. My comments regarding to ISO, and I believe during the county board meeting, I qualified the fact that I understand their state statutes and I also understand that there's ISO guidelines. One is mandated by law, one is not. Fire departments, if they do not go through ISO, which affects all of those, it impacts those people in that community. My comment in regards to ISO and whether 911 got that information, if you look at the cover letter, this was CC 2 Nanette Kripis. Now, I can only go off of the fact that they told me they notified her. That's what I went off of, so there's my evidence for that. In regards to speaking with Mr. Eads, we've spoke several times, far more than a half dozen, and the evidence will be in your phone records when you call me. And in that regard, because I don't call you very often, most of the time it's restricted so I don't have your number. Our most recent phone call dealt with putting a repeater system on different towers and different communications recorded by the press. I didn't hear any reference of that conversation, that was a lot of information that I gave you. During that conversation, I've also talked about ISO. Do you believe radios are important?
No.
You do?
Communication.
So it's pretty important, necessity? Okay. "I've been on Hume Fire Department for several years and we used to have fire phones and a loud whistle. I believe this would be equipment required to produce a response. We still set off an alarm when there's a fire. Pagers are great, but they're not the answer to everything and not required. Radios are a huge asset, but they're not a necessity on the fire ground. Water is." That's your quote. That's from your email. So does that, you've changed your position on radios?
No.
Well, you told me they're not a necessity at that 911 meeting.
Well, they're not. Water's a necessity.
They are a necessity. They're a necessity under Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number 5, which deals with intergovernmental telecommunications. Have I ever gone to the 911 and discussed these matters? Yeah, in fact, in the minutes, and it wasn't me that asked for radios, it was our trustee I was dealing with trying to get pagers reimbursed, which has nothing to do with this. Kansas Fire Chief Allen addressed the board and discussed the insurance service office rating for Kansas. I referenced the lower ratings, how it equates to insurance, which in these hours, the 911 minutes. He said the battery backup on the Kansas tower and weekly testing increasing to an hour in duration would help. Batteries are now part of those towers. That was a change of progress that was made. You've confirmed they're doing the testing on generators. One of the conclusions in the minutes was, "I've offered assistance to any agency regarding the ISO rating because I teach this all over the country. This isn't about me." And as far as State Farm, State Farm is one of the largest companies that does not recognize it in Illinois. They're mandated by law in many other states, Georgia being one of them, but there's a whole laundry list of them. South Carolina's study, University of South Carolina's probably one of the most comprehensive studies in cost effectiveness as to why it's important to utilize that as a system to help most homeowners, and I've qualified that numerous times in both my articles and in comments. Not all of them recognize it, I understand that. Those who don't, there's nothing I can do about that. As far as our tax rate in Kansas, it probably is the highest. We're the only fire department in the entire county that offers both fire, rescue, and ambulance. Governor Huckabee's study, this was done in Arkansas in 2003, just to give you perspective of an unmandated guideline for ISO because they are a for-profit corporation, as is A work study estimated the statewide cost of the project statewide to be about $150 million and that was to bring 839 rural fire departments from a nine to a seven. According to the analysis, the statewide savings would total more than $100 million per year. More than 425,000 homeowners would share the benefits with an average annual savings of $235 per household. That was Governor Huckabee's work that he did in Arkansas. If we don't want to lower it, that's fine. I'm going to continue to push. When I dealt with legislators and talked with what we're doing with statewide 911, now statewide 911, I believe it's, whatever the title is, there's going to be a directorship from the state police or under the state police guidelines. The push is not just here in this county. This is a push I've been working on statewide, countrywide, for 20 years. This is just a piece of the puzzle. If you want to make it about me, that's fine. I've got broad shoulders, I can take it. This is about trying to do what's in the best interest of everyone. If my comments offended someone, I'm sorry you got offended, but don't sit here and tell me we haven't talked more than a dozen times because you know damn well we have. And your phone records will prove it. This is about doing what we can for the community, nothing more. If you want me to bow out of trying to help do this, that's fine, but the facts don't change. There's places we can pick up points across the board, both fire, water, very little bit in our water community without doing this. I'm just asking, do we point in the right direction to get those things going? When I ask for people to be removed, I believe when I've got a person sitting on a 911 board that tells me in an email that radios are not a necessity on the fire ground, that person is clueless when it comes to emergency operations because it's a mandated requirement under federal guidelines. We have to be able to communicate. That's all I've got, gentlemen.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
The other day, I don't recall the exact number, but you said that when you took over your ratings, was it eight or nine?
We were nine.
To what?
First time we went to a seven and when I went through that inspection, myself and the inspector went to the dispatch center and they talked with Nanette and got whatever information that was and that was either a nine or 10 when that happened. And now, after we've gone through it a second time, we're at a six. We went from a seven to a six. Now our rural, we went from a nine to a six also and that was because of things we did with the Clark Edgar water and the ability to utilize that water as a supply source.
I know, I've talked to a couple, actually three different insurance agents and was asking, you know, what the ratings were in the county. And I think they said Paris was five. Two of the insurance agents told me this and not the third one, that Paris was a five, Crispin was a six, and Kansas was a seven. And I said, "Doesn't matter whether you're in the city, you know, in the village where there's a water system versus out in the country." And they said that this, their clients were all sevens. And they said the one client was a seven and they had a fire hydrant right in their front yard. And I was asking about over here in the Paris area and they said, "Once you get out of Paris," and this one company, their first question is, "Are you within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant?" And if you're not, I think they said you bump up to an eight automatically. And we were talking about Vermillion and they said, you know, "There's a fire station there, they've got a water system, fire hydrants." And I said, "It doesn't matter, they're an eight." So I guess I don't understand the ratings, you know, they're not consistent. And part of it, I guess, depends on the insurance company because, you know...
Well, as far as the ratings, the ratings are consistent on how they're applied and there's different criteria.
Right. Because I found that different insurance agents, companies use different criteria. Like one said that if you're more than eight mile from Paris Fire Station, your rates go up by 10%.
Right. Yeah, some of them will use a five mile criteria, eight, 10. And those typically are going to be agencies that do not recognize ISO as a whole. Some of them use part of it. But those who recognize ISO, the ISO schedule is consistent with what that's going to be. And it used to be five road miles. If you were five road, not as profiled, but five road miles, you automatically bumped into what was called an eight or an 8B rural rating. And a lot of that depended on, from the rural areas, was hydrant location and how fast they can get water to you.
Bottom line, it's water supply is the major factor on all this, isn't it, basically?
Well, it's a portion of it.
But it's a big factor.
Yeah. There's a 50, 40, and 10. Now, on the ISO schedule, 50% comes from the fire department capacity and that's, that deals with personnel, equipment, all types of different equipment. The 40% comes from your water supply and that's usually going to be in your municipality, the lake. Crop Max, for example, has got, when they went in, we got credit for what we had water supply there that we could draw from that we didn't have before. The 10% comes from the telecommunications side. And each one has a huge breakdown of scoring on it that goes into that whole scoring process.
But I, you know, that information that you provided to us the other day, I was looking at that and of course it says 10% of it is off of telecommunications.
Right.
But, and we're, I, our scores were about halfway four out of 10 or something.
Four, four point seven, four point five out of 10.
But if, I guess if, you know, you're talking about how there'd be a big savings if telecommunications got their act together. if telecommunications got their act together, but I guess my point, one point that I'll make, that even if we were perfect, as far as the overall ratings, would be minimal.
Well, and that's, if you go back and watch the video...
If you didn't have the water, what makes difference to response time? You're eight miles out, and you don't have the water supply.
It's not about response time. And here's, it's a great question, and unfortunately, that's why ISO is so misunderstood across the country. When I reference being able to drop one more point, let's say on that, on that ISO scoring, I'm a nine, and I missed an eight by two points. Two points can be picked up.
So they don't give you, you're either a nine, or eight, or seven, they don't give you like a nine and a half, or eight and a half?
Right. They give you that number. So if I can pick up two points and drop into an eight, I have a savings. If I can pick up, you know, whatever that little, those that are on the bubble...
Right.
Is what, in the industry, we call it being on the bubble. And telecommunications is one that typically is easier to pick up than it is because of the infrastructure of the water system and communities, and the serious cost of buying another reserve pumper or reserve ladder for areas and reserve personnel. And the one thing, and this is used all over the country in looking at these things, University of South Carolina, they broke down a massive study on the savings from one rate to another. The goal is to be as high in each category as you can with the least expense involved, and that's telecommunications, and it always has been. Unfortunately, overall, it's only 10% of the score. But if I'm on the bubble, and I can go, I can, Brian right now is a five, I don't think they have a five comparison on here, from a six to a four, just as an example, 1,308 bucks on a $250,000 home, 1,308 bucks down to 1,170. That's just for one home. Going from that one step lower, and it's just a matter of two steps, and it's a matter of, like I said in that meeting, being able to pick up those points anywhere we can. Coles County is a 6.9 on their communications. So it's about two and a half points more that they get in their overall rating structure. Two and a half points, I don't know what every department's on, but I know the first time I went through this, I was a point off of hitting a lower number. And we picked it up this time, but we still, we're still striving to go further. And I believe that we can have a much better score than 4.5 in our telecommunications. When I talked to Brian, the fire chief in Paris, he told me that the numbers he had were different than what I had. And I haven't seen that, I haven't seen his numbers, but that's what he told me over the phone, and if that's the case, then there's a problem somewhere, because it should be the same number, and I said that to me, it should be the same for everybody in the county.
But what, my question is, what does 911 have to do with your telecommunications problem? Are they responsible for the telecommunications problem?
Yes. It's a county adopted system, and that's why ISO sends a copy of that to the village, to the fire department. It's not just a fire department thing, it's three categories.
Sure, but what does 911 have to do with the telecommunications that's administered by the sheriff? That's what I'm saying. They've got a very narrow window that they can cause this to happen. Am I correct, or am I...
Which part of the telecommunications?
That's what I'm asking you. You're saying 911 didn't do this, didn't do that, but it looks like the sheriff's dispatch didn't do this and didn't do that. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Well, with what you have in this system, you have dual control. I think from a 911 standpoint, from a legality standpoint, it comes into the EMD certifications, that's a 911 issue. And that's something that, you guys have fought that back and forth, who's in charge? I don't care who's in charge of it. Can we fix it? That's my point.
Well, I think we can now, because...
I think now that it's been brought to light, you know, I've talked with both of these two individuals right here, and they're already working on getting the information to the lady. I think they, the people out there in New Jersey, that's who our representative is, dropped the ball. You know, for them not to talk to the people that actually do the communication, the people in charge of that...
Oh, and I'm...
Versus looking at a national database that nobody knows who provides that information...
I'm looking into that, because when the gal from New Jersey came out, apparently she did Paris fire districts, or Paris departments, and I know, Brad, you called it, got a bunch of questions from us. For whatever reason, we didn't get hit during that cycle, and then two months later, they wanted to come out and do us, which I'd already been through it within a five-year window, so I was surprised if they came out that quick again. But they told me they did do all that with 911. Whether they did or not, I don't know. Alls I've got is a report to go off of, and that's what I'm going off of, and they CC'd it to Nanette. Where it went from there is beyond me, I have no idea.
Did I see that paper where they CC'd me? Because I've never received anything.
I think it just has your name on the top of it, doesn't it? Did it have an email address on it, Kirk?
It's on the second page, that's the cover letter that we all got. My village got it, my trustees got it, we got it.
But I think now that it's been brought to light, they're on top of it, and she's already been working on getting some information, and I still would like for them to come here and see the operation.
And I appreciate that. All due respect, gentlemen. As Troy referenced.
Well, the numbers change, though, if you don't have the, it looks like to me it's kind of like, first thing they look at is water. If the infrastructure's not there, then the communication number isn't going to matter, is it?
No, that's not true.
That's not true?
Not at all. If the, it's a percentage, whatever I have, I can't change my water score. That 40% number that I have from the village, I can't change. My areas I can change, I can change some of that, and 911 can change some of it. You're looking at a 10-point window from one class to another, when they break it down, 1 through 10, you score the best, you're at the top of the chart. If you're 10 points off, you're class two, 10 more points, you're class three. It's a 10-point opportunity that you're looking at to lower the rating. Water, from a village standpoint, is 40% of the overall scoring, but no, it's not just about water. Not at all. And back to, now that it's been brought to light... That first time that I did bring it to light, I'm going to read what's in their minutes. "Mr. Allen addressed the board and discussed the insurance service rating for Kansas and how he was successfully, had successfully worked to lower its number. The ISO rating helps insurance companies determine premiums for homeowners in the area they serve based on fire suppression ability, water availability, and communications." He said, "A lower ISO rating equals a lower insurance premium for residents." He said that a battery backup on the Kansas tower and weekly testing increase to an hour in duration would help. Nanette said the battery backup for the Kansas tower is actually in the works, and she said that weekly testing could be increased to meet ISO standard. Merle also explained, "911 system is an enhanced system and always has been, and that all Edgar County dispatchers are EMD dispatch trained. The cost of the training for dispatchers is provided by 911. Merle Clark encouraged Fire Chief Allen to contact Nanette if service has an issue." I'm not questioning the service of 911, that's not what this is about.
What's that date when you're talking about?
This is February 2011. They go on throughout the rest of this, nothing related to ISO in that discussion, and then at the end, Fire Chief Allen concluded his remarks by offering assistance to any agency regarding their ISO rating. This is not the first time this has come to light, guys. It's the first time that anybody's listened to what I've said. This isn't new. It's not about me. You can make it about me, you can try to make it personal, but it won't work. It's not going to. The facts are what they are, and all insurance, if I said that in the meeting, I know I've qualified, and in my article I've qualified, my presentations, everywhere I go in the country, not everybody, unfortunately, can benefit from it. It's one of those things that some insurance companies do, some don't, but there are states that actually mandate they have to follow the ISO criteria because it's been recognized universally all over the country as a benefit. There's studies out there you can find, typically you'll find them from fire chiefs that are against ISO because it's a headache. It's a pain to put all this paperwork together and go through this. Then you'll find the others that use it solely for the purpose of getting new equipment. They want to use it as a method to get the equipment, because hey, I can lower my rating. Well, that's one side of it, but that's the most expensive side of lowering an ISO rating, is your infrastructure, your fire department number two, telecommunications is number three. Anything else?
Question?
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, committee reports. Andy?
Now, need to, I guess the heat pump at the, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but the heat pump at the judge's chambers went out. The air handler has, is also out, basically out, and has electric elements that kick in when the heat pump, when it's too cold for the heat pump to work. So both of them are out, basically. So we got estimates, three estimates on it, and...
Have you got all three?
I've got all three.
Okay, I've only got two of them.
Here's, everybody can look at these if you want. Because the one from White came in to you.
I got White and Walker.
Okay, I got, I copied Walker, but basically White's was...
Well, I've only got some copy of Walker.
John White was $8,300, $8,400. Walker was $7,062, but also in Walker's, there is going to be an additional expense to have someone with a crane come and set it on top, because it's on a roof. And then I got one from Paris Refrigeration, $6,500, but that's setting it on and taking care of it, it's a complete deal for $6,500. The, because of the fact that it's three-phase, that's how long it takes three weeks to get the actual heat pump unit. It'll take, it's going to take, did Walker, did Walker say he could, he had access to one, or he'd have to order it too?
I don't, I just...
I guess that's probably why I was talking to Bob, but most of these guys will have to order, because it's three-phase, no more stocks, those units that last come from the factory, it's about a three-week turnaround. But they can go ahead and put the air handler unit inside.
Which gives you the secondary heat.
The heat and...
Brisk heat.
Yeah. And to keep the place heated until three weeks or so, until they can get in, get the unit and then set it on. Now, setting that unit on this time of year, you're going to get a crane in the courthouse, in the yard, do you want it to be froze or dried?
Well, I understand that weighs 280 pounds.
280 pounds.
We really need a, I'm just questioning, we really need a crane to set that, there's no, we can't take it apart and run it through a window and set it on?
All them windows are lit. I mean, I don't, the only thing I was thinking is, if you get one Skylis, maybe lift it up and...
Set it over there?
My JLG will handle 400 pounds. My JLG lifts it, I've got a 400, 450 or 500 pound capacity, I think.
I mean, guys can get up there and get the, I mean, guys can get on the window to get the manpower to move it, it's just...
Getting it up.
The window already includes that, you know, the stuff.
Right.
So we already have one that includes all that stuff.
Two of them include that.
Two of them include that.
Two.
But the lowest one already includes all that stuff.
Includes everything there.
Including putting in...
But they're all saying we need to replace it, we can't go in and put a new compressor.
Well, you're different refrigeration. These are the old, R22 and 410 refrigerant, the old ones are R10, R10, is that what you use? R22.
How old is it? You know?
It's probably 20...
Yeah, let's put in this 70, they didn't resolve them. Some of the others have been replaced, this one has to be...
Okay.
And that's the one of the things that...
Well, and you have no, really don't have much warranty when you just replace the compressor, but, and then the air handler, you got the, the elements are burned out. You're patching up old stuff with no warranty then, and with this you get a two-year warranty, two-year labor.
Two-year labor and five years, I think I read on there.
On the compressor, five years?
Five year on parts and compressor, two years free service.
I mean, at my standpoint, from, you know, when we talked about, you know, the committee and stuff a little bit, I don't know that we'd want to put in something even for a couple thousand plus for repairs, if I understood that correctly. With nothing, with no backing behind that, at least from a warranty type aspect.
Right. I ran the same deal, I had an air conditioner went out. Well, you know, you could put a new compressor in it, but then you're talking about not much like a 90-day warranty on it. And then, who knows what else is wrong with it? You put the compressor, well then you got capacitors and different things that are going to go out on you. I mean, they're all got the age on them, so every other component in that is old.
Plus you're getting technology that's maybe more efficient than what they had 20 years ago.
That's probably a 10 sear back then, that's a 14, and it cuts your use with the heat pump. Of course, when it switches to electric heat, it's going to be...
Oh, that's what he's got. The way I understood it, though, I just, I think Bob might tell me this, that Judge Garcia, it was fine right now, it's not cold in there.
Oh, they've got, the water still has heat in there that they can turn on, it just isn't controllable heat.
I got you.
You know, that they...
90 or 60?
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's what it is.
Any other option is, Walmart's got Carhartts on sale.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could chip in and get him a pair of black ones.
They won't own underneath that roof.
Let me get that clear on this, this is what you recommend for the judge?
Yeah.
I think...
Get walls are cheap.
Looks like Carhartts are... The building committee and the sheriff should be able to handle this. I don't think we need a board vote or anything, just to, the building committee, because it, actually, it's an emergency.
But in your, you're probably the most learned individual on that kind of stuff, and you think this needs to be, we need to replace it. That's all I wanted to hear, was that the reason why we need to replace it?
Yes, if the compressor's out, which somebody's implied it is, or all of them have, yes. Because of the age.
Okay. I didn't realize it was that old, I thought it was four, five years old, is what I understood.
I think the one in the state's attorney is, it's been replaced, but this one hasn't.
Andy, I appreciate you doing all the background check and as far as different information and who does what, what they do, but I didn't even remember that.
Anything else? Somebody, somebody asked me about Christmas tree, and whether it's going to leave, or how long it's going to be. Probably will find out, I got a lot of the same thing. Okay.
Who's the third bid?
Uh, Paris Refrigeration.
Don Finney.
Don Finney.
Don Finney, that's $6,500.
He does model work, he's...
But that wasn't replacing, that was just, that wasn't putting new units, it's just parts of it?
No, no, that's replacing the air handler and the... We also, I sent you or called you, I guess, because I just found out about it, I think that morning, but Rob Howery called me, and he was meeting with USDA as far as, Jeff was there with us, we walked around the jail with the USDA lady. And there's a couple different programs out there, I mean, they have a grant program that they'll give to, wasn't it your understanding that, I mean, he brought it to your attention?
Right. It was about, it was kind of $25,000.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
And it was kind of a guaranteed, you could use it towards buildings or...
Buildings or, or, car, any infrastructure.
Vehicles.
Yeah, vehicles, anything, vehicles, anything. And then they had a small reduced rate loan programs that are pretty much guaranteed to anybody that wants it, but...
What did you have to do for the $25,000?
Just fill out the grant, send it in. Now, there's not, tons of money out there, she's, what she's, I...
So you got, she got $3 million?
Yeah.
For her area? She has champagne?
Yeah.
Okay. For her, for her area.
So this $25,000 is just a grant and you have to pay it back?
No.
Oh.
It's a grant.
Sure you go, you didn't, you wrote no interest, no nothing?
No, nothing. You can apply for the grant, and it has to do with, I wanted to get run it by somebody before...
Well, I thought Robert was going to be here.
Well, I did too, so, because he was aware of the standards, which are, there's some standard that's set that puts us in a pretty good position, it's worth applying for it.
Rural area, lower population.
Yeah, like, yeah, I really thought he was going to be here today.
And then you was talking about there's 30, 30-some million available for...
3 million.
3 million.
But see, that's where that $25,000 comes out. They get 3... They, they get three million dollars to pass out and they break it down into twenty-five thousand dollars.
In increments.
In increments.
And you can spend it for anything you want as long as it's basically...
Pretty much, yeah, you get the grant, you can do anything you want with it.
Okay. So this is...
Why now?
For the sheriff.
This is a thorough, I can't believe there's no strings on this thing, no.
So when we were talking, the last meeting, there was talking about there might be enough for, to build a new jail, that's not...
That's, no, it's not.
That's not.
And that's where the loans would work in.
You get the low interest loan to do things like that.
How, how many, what was the cap on it, Andy, do you remember?
Cap on the loan?
Yeah. No.
I'm not sure she, she said, did she, or I, she might've went out of the room, I don't remember any.
I don't recall what the cap was.
Cause I, I remember talking about, you could pay it off over quite a few years, you could pay this off.
He's not here.
Okay. But I, I guess the gist of this is, I think, I don't know, I, I wanna get a hold of Rob and find out exactly what process you go through to apply for.
Well, I kinda gathered by the email that he was, I had an email, of course, my computer went down Friday. I got it up this morning and I kinda gathered he was looking into getting everything done for it. And that's why I understood, I thought he was gonna be here, that's why.
Well, I kinda thought he was gonna be here too, so he may have had something come up. Anyway, that's on the burner at this point, I think.
You're, you're thinking that he's gonna make the application or the grant out and...
What, what is this out now, Jim? What, now what are we, what are we applying for? What is, what's this doing?
It's basically USDA has four, four communities that are, that we, we basically fall in, in this classification of communities. There are four, that's basically what it amounts to.
And it's basically twenty-five thousand dollars to use.
To do through what, though? Through the county highway, through the sheriff's department, through the county clerk's office? Is this through the county in general, or do we have limits on expen- or is that too far down the line? Limits on where we can spend, where we can't spend? Goods and services, equipment?
To get the grant, we would have to tell them what we're gonna spend it on. Okay, and right now, what they're looking at is spending on the, or how this all started was spending on the jail.
Right.
Or if they had, was gonna give us six million dollars to build a new jail and that would've been, but that wasn't...
Oh, so it's not necessarily for law enforcement?
No, it's USDA, rural development, basically.
Okay.
Can use it.
Right. I got you now.
But that's where she, that's where that woman was, was taken to look at the jail and, and come up with recommendations.
Right. Okay.
And you said something about three million dollars is all she's got?
She got three million, that she breaks down into twenty-five thousand.
Can you get two or three twenty-five thousand?
Nah, we would work on that.
And she said no?
No. She gets one child a pound. If you want more than that, you gotta borrow it.
Okay. At a low interest.
At a low interest, what's three to four percent interest?
That's something.
Well, it's coming.
Anything else?
No.
Dan?
Uh, animal shelter, I checked last week, everything's going fine. We did change the meetings, we lost every three months, but it is posted, so...
What day?
Pardon?
Didn't change the day, it was gonna be...
Not, yeah, it's on Tuesday at ten o'clock at the Kreckman Building. We posted it, I think, two or three places, Augie's office and Kreckman Building.
I don't have it.
At Willby's.
Okay.
I have a copy of it. And we have a special meeting, uh, we can set it up. I told Andrew, I check every week, see if there are any problems. Do you have a lot of documents yet, so be interested. Uh, health department, uh, meeting last week, they were questioning the term limit for the people on the committee. They thought, they couldn't understand why it's not longer, like some of them, they're...
I can explain it.
Okay.
It's state law.
Oh, okay. Some of them are out in July and some of them are in April, so that's...
I thought we made that very clear, actually, their terms started...
Three years ago.
Three years ago, but they wasn't officially appointed like they should've been.
Yeah, they didn't understand, so...
So they're really not that small of them?
I said, check on them.
Okay. Well, that's, that's...
So you're getting, you're getting punished for being able to go between...
Basically, basically, uh, since you have tough time finding people to run for those positions anyway, so...
They didn't like the one-year term? It wasn't really a one-year term?
Well, they thought that's, they interpreted that's the way it was. They probably didn't understand that you're saying it's state law, so you might want to explain it to Janet, or I can. So this is the way it is, that's the way it is. That's my explanation.
I would say that possibly I've explained it to her and, and Augie's explained it to her.
Dan was still, still working on the, uh, heating and cooling system there, so, I have no expectancy that we're working on it, so. Other than that, no problem.
That's it?
That's it.
Um, I wanted to ask the sheriff, when is your meeting with the, uh, the state jail inspectors?
February the fifth.
February the fifth. That's my, I just wanna make sure it happens.
This is the annual thing?
I don't know, is it ann- is it just cause you're new, they want to...
It's annual.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, week from Thursday.
Would you want somebody from the buildings and grounds to be there when that happens?
Probably be all right, somebody wanted to walk through with us.
All buildings and grounds and sheriff's committee votes should be...
Well, I mean, as many guys that wanna go, that's not a problem, I just, I'm trying to, I, but I, I just wanna, I just wanna be there when, uh, or I...
He'd sent me a copy of the old last year's inspection and I kinda reviewed it and some things are fixed, some about the same.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I've got, I think.
You guys need to let me know, so I can post that, cause if you're gonna get all of you together, that's an open meeting. So...
You need to know...
Would you like for me to post that, and you, you gonna be there, Mike?
Well, we need to think about that, cause the...
How much time, brain-easy?
It needs forty-eight hours before the...
Forty-eight hours, okay. Figure out if he's gonna be there or supposedly I'll be there.
No, you just need to post that we're, you're gonna have it that...
I'll just post it that we're gonna have it February the fifth.
Okay.
When are they coming in?
What time?
Yeah.
Uh, nine, nine, I think, but I wouldn't, I've got it in my...
So it's up to the public?
It's surely, I don't think it can be...
Yeah, you gotta be careful here.
I don't think, I don't think you can open the security.
Yeah.
Because you're going through.
Because he's going through, need to think about this first.
That's why I was saying, probably one person, just to represent the board.
Because if it's, if the whole board's there, then you...
That's a security issue.
You got, you know...
And no, and no offense to anybody, it needs to even be me or Carl, probably, or one of us.
Yeah.
So we'll deal with it.
Okay.
You done?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Carl?
I know we had lengthy discussion on nine-one-one and ISO ratings and all that, and just, do you guys have any more comments, any of the three of you, on the conversation we had?
I think that, uh, you know, Brian and Nanette and, and I know you've talked to them, but, uh, worked with ISO mitigation. I've contacted ISO mitigation. I think some of those low-hanging fruits will be pretty easily attained, even, even like real soon. Um, it's just a matter of getting the right information to the right people, and that's what the major breakdown was. Um, and we do, again, I would say that we will work very hard to drive down those ISO scores for all the fire departments. It's well within our controls and we'll work with the county board and sheriff to make sure that happens. A lot of that stuff, that, that, like what you were talking about and what Kirk's saying, is that training and stuff, those telecommunicators? We're not gonna point fingers, we're gonna work together to make sure that those NFPA standards get met, or as close as we can. Because it is the right thing to do for all the fire departments in the county, if we can drive down that communications score. But again, I would like to say that it was the first time I seen that on an ISO thing, what Kirk brought. First time that Nanette's seen it and we jumped right on it that day. You know, she may, you know, Brian and, and her were working on it, I worked on it from my information and I have a better understanding of the measurements and, like Kirk says, some of those testings are very in-depth and confusing. But I think we have a good understanding of what they're looking for and some of those low-hanging fruits, we're gonna be able to get, get those points brought up there. And, uh, the GIS and some of that stuff, it'll take a lot of money and probably in the future. But we're working on that too, from, uh, in April, there's a big meeting over in Indianapolis, about the fire departments and, and all that stuff. And that's one of the goals that we have, is to take a trip to educate ourselves on that GIS a little bit more. But I think that we can bring the county up to the, the latest technology, uh, in the near future. You know, it, it might be a year down the road or maybe a little bit more, but the main thing is, is we gotta work together. And, you know, Kirk's good at providing information, um, but I just hope that in the future, that he could come to board or work with the board or work together to make this happen. You know, to make, make it better for everybody. And, and we will do that, any way we can legally or with our money or financial, whatever.
Well, on your last thing here, I've been on the board two years and I had no idea what Kirk was talking about, okay? And I, and I, I, years ago, Herman was justifying all the money he spent by platform trucks that go two-thousand feet in the air and all that stuff. And I'm thinking, wow, why are we doing that? And, well, Herman says, the more equipment I have, the cheaper the insurance rates are. That's a general statement and that was ten years ago. And I, and that's, that's my knowledge of what... So then when Kirk brings this up, I'm all ears, I wanna know what he's talking about. But that's the first I'd heard about it and I think that's probably the first, Dan didn't know anything about, I don't know if Alan knew what, what they were talking about either. Uh, Ben had been on the longest and he may or may not have known, but, um, I, I, I'm real pleased with after that came out, the response that we got from you and Nanette and, and the sheriff, everybody thinking, well, listen, i- in, in, the past is the past. But I think we all know maybe some of, what some of the issue was, things weren't getting, people weren't working together. Now that everybody's working together, my gut feeling is this is a non-issue. It's gonna get handled and you guys as a board are gonna have to make determination, how much of your money you're wanting to spend? If you're gonna throw a hundred bucks to save ten cents, that's crazy and I think you guys have made the right decision. But if it looks like you need to spend a little money for us to have a overall county savings of X, then that's what you need to do. And I think you'll do that and I, I don't, as, my message to the rest of the board is, I don't think we've got a problem, I think it's gonna get addressed. And we just need to kinda communicate once in a while to Carl, he's gonna go to the nine-one, and if it's not getting addressed, then somebody will hear about it, but...
Well, to be honest, since I've been the chairman, I've been focused on the Illinois compiled statutes and the, and the legislation that oversees us. You know, this is, again, something that's, that sneaks in there, you know, that the ISO and NFPA, and it's not part of the Illinois compiled statute, Emergency Telephone Systems Board Act. So, you know, I, I've kinda had a, a narrow focus on that, but yet we broaden up a little bit to try to help everybody and I think we can. But we have to look and make sure it's something we can legally do without getting the county involved also. You know, Carl will probably be a good person for that, the ISO between the county and nine-one-one, to make sure that those, that happens.
And for heaven's sakes, if you guys hear something, it's the sheriff's responsibility, dispatch and then let, you know, for heaven's sake, I'm sure you will let him know, but this is his, he needs to do.
Like, two weeks before our board meeting, I believe, can you have something, like an answer that we can do this and this? That with ISO, that we can be able, we can be able to...
You mean like an action plan? Sure, we'll have an action plan.
Yes, there are things that you can, or can't.
I've got a contact that I've spoken to and I'm providing her some information.
Okay, I'm good, yeah.
Um, she gave me a little more specifics on what she knew and I've never been asked for those things previously, so. I've been working to gather that documentation. It's not gonna happen overnight.
Sure, well, I was...
It's manual.
I was thinking of Carl Hudson, a report to give us then, uh, of...
I, I can keep him updated if I, if I have forwarded that to him. I'm hoping to have that done within two weeks, but I have to manually look stuff up, so...
Yes, well, I was thinking of the low-hanging fruit, that if you can...
And that's one of them.
I am working on it.
Correct.
I assure you, I am working on it.
Chairman, as a, as a point of interest on that, I would, at a minimum, if you were to contact ISO now and say, hey, I need the criteria checklist for this category...
I did that, that is what I did.
You'd think, two weeks, three weeks, maybe a month before you ever get it from them. Why is it on me? It'll take you a long time to get that and then to go through that criteria, it could take, like I've just said, at least a couple months before you can really put all that data together. And typically, they give us a four to six-month notice that they're even coming. And that's why, because it takes that much work to get all that footed place. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. And I said that at the last meeting, this isn't something that happens overnight.
But when I was talking, contacting some insurance companies, the one insurance agent told me that in the dealings with Nanette, she has always gone above and beyond information that she's requested from Nanette. And she, I explained what was going on with this ISO ratings and, you know, that the telecommunications, uh, ratings were low. And she felt confident that based on her dealings with Nanette, that Nanette would look into it and get things straightened out. Just threw that out because of the confidence that this insurance company had with her, so... And I've briefly have talked with her, actually, more than briefly, two or three times, and Jeff, and I feel confident that they're gonna do whatever it takes to try to get this ratings increased as much as we can. You know, you're never gonna get a perfect rating.
Right.
But, you know, as Kirk mentioned, you know, some of this stuff, you know, GS, GIS or whatever, you know, this, there's gonna be a lot of, some of this stuff is almost impossible.
Right.
Unless you wanna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and, you know...
Or eight-hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it's, you know, you, we gotta make a decision, you know, a lot of the documentation, procedures, stuff like that, we can do, but when it comes down to spend big bucks, might not be able to do that.
Well, and there's a couple items on there that are even totally out of our control. It's with how the call delivery is from the phone company. So I spoke to a couple different people about the VoIP stuff and we can't change that, so...
I'm confident they'll work and do what we can to improve things. That's all I have.
Alan?
Uh, just, Jeff's not here today, so, uh, finally, I was gonna be met the other day with this a little bit with, uh, Augie and Deana, Don, treasurer, clerk and supervisory assessments, the lack of better there. And discussed a little bit about personnel issues for around that area. Uh, need for more or less determination of, especially in the supervisory assessments office, um, bringing up somebody from a half-time position to a full-time position to cover that amount that Deana plans on, as she said, that is be a, a working supervisory assessment. But this other, bringing this other person up to the half will still be, uh, less budgeted. Is that how you understood that, Carl? Uh, less budgeted than what we did anyway last year.
You're gonna have half, half a person less, right?
You know what, Ben?
Well, if you bring in the half-time to full-time and, and she's not, or you eliminated the other supervisor assessment...
Right.
You're gonna be still less people.
Technically, you're right, half a person less.
That's as it stands now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, in my mind, that's what that issue was about, yeah, to try to bring up that other person to half-time to make that difference between, Deana's still working like she was.
Mm-hmm.
That is gone, that's full, that person's gone, so you're bringing this other person up to half-time. Now, there's also consideration, as there is in other offices that you're talking about, with county clerk, public, county treasurer, acting, you know, state's attorney, supervisor assessments. Everybody wants half more person, or one more person, I mean, just because of the amount of work that they feel they have in their offices. But yes, that's my belief of what's happening right now, Coach, all right? So, uh, a little discrepancy, although we were talking about that the other day, wasn't it, Carl? I don't wanna admit it, I was, I was worried, took a while soaking on it, but, uh, anyway, but that, that's what was decided there. We're still trying to also, I don't know if Augie's office had a chance to visit with, uh, Busher yet and set up our meeting with them. If you had anything, or anything from, no.
Is that what you emailed us about?
I'd like to really get that squared away.
What's that meeting about?
Well, you know, we had this big issue in December, or whatever it was, about what they're doing, what they're not doing, all that stuff. And so they tried to contact the county clerk's office in December to get it up and then it was too much toward the end. And so I just don't want it to lag. I mean, if there's questions about it, let's get it out, let's get it open, so I wanna have like a... So I wanna have like a Insurance Committee meeting, and probably have somebody from the County Clerk's Office, or whatever there, or Treasurer's Office, I don't care who, you know, all guys' children can be there, and, uh, talk it out, but basically as a format of a committee meeting, and that way we get, uh, that's why I'm gonna try to get some dates and times from you guys, what's good, then I'll throw those back in the holidays, and let's do it, and throw it back in our shoe.
Do you have to go over there a little bit?
Yeah.
Just set it up and give us a two-day?
Well, that's why I, I wanted to find out, Tuesdays or Wednesdays this is when on, you know, I'll, I'll get back with you.
Okay.
So we just swear.
Well, sorry I didn't email you back.
That's all right, I knew where you were gonna be, get that.
Yeah.
And if not, I was gonna find you.
That's all right.
I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, for those two.
I'm not on the Finance Committee, but I know Jeff met with the hospital people last week, and I think Jeff was with him, so I don't. Jeff called me, said the meeting went very well, so I really can't give you any details on what they decided to do. The reason why I got caught in the middle, because I was the first one that was notified with finances that, uh, had accumulated over a period of time from inmates that had been taken to the jail, and I didn't know how, kinda they're supposed to pay for it, so the bills had accumulated up to pretty significant fund. So, uh, Jeff met last week with Ollie, I think, and, uh, I think, uh, the Comptroller, I guess he worked something else, I don't, I don't know the details on it, I think Jeff probably could.
Part of the issue also was there, it's like when you're on Medicare, Medicaid.
Or self, on your own insurance.
Right, you know, whether or not they were gonna try to take, Jeff may be, I might just, a little bit more now too. Some of that's changed a little bit though, according to Jeff, when I was talking about it, because of 19, or 19, 2013 law. So we may be getting kicked in the pants a little bit more from the county, respect for it before, we could say, that's a Medicare issue, that's a, you know, Medicare, you can only take so much. Jeff, we were talking about, were you there at the meeting with?
Jeff.
Jeff and Ollie, do you wanna share anything on that, or?
Basically, money they're not getting from people we're taking to the hospitals. Of course, problem is, we got to cross-checking the people, about half of them, weren't even our prisoners that they were billing us for.
Now, that's, that's a good question, right, because if the city makes an arrest, and somebody gets injured, or somebody's sick, isn't it the city's responsibility to take them to healthcare before they bring them to you to the jail?
Well, whenever, but once they come into our door, they belong in us.
Right.
But, but a lot of these people, two or three of them we went through and have never been in our facility. Some of them have been, but not at the time.
During that period of time.
Well, they were picked up by the city police and brought directly to the ER, and then, for some reason, I guess they're saying, like.
And the mayor needs to be paying that bill.
Well, that's, that was an informational meeting, like Dan said, there's informational, fuck Jeff about it, registering Jeff and Ollie.
But they write it off as, as charity, but we're still billed at a Medicaid fee, which is?
10%, 20%.
15% or something like that, which, the, the example they gave us had 15 names on it. The bill was $25,000, our part was gonna be $3,300, is what amount.
And that was the other issue that came out through there, correct me if I'm wrong, just to restate that, is that their billing is not at full billing on, they're, they're billing us now, based on this 2013 law, if they can, on the Medicare slash Medicaid billing information, like we talked a couple meetings ago, how, I think it was the ambulances, you mentioned it, and Nicole mentioned, like, you're just stuck, whatever they pay you, they, they pay you. And so, hospital, if I was correct again on this, the hospital actually, if it's for people that we're truly gonna have to pay for, they're only gonna be billing us on that Medicare or Medicaid payment amount. So it's not, it's not like a $20,000 bill.
Well, it'd be a $5,000 bill, she gave an example, uh, we'd pay $1,000, five thousand, that's what she was saying.
On whatever that billing is.
Something I wasn't aware of, I talked to Jeff Voit last night. We are charging an inmate 10 bucks, I think it is, a head, when they come in there, through the court system. And that goes directly into a fund that's supposed to offset that.
Right.
And, and I don't quote unearlier, but I think Jeff told me, like, right now, it currently has like $17,000 in that jail medical cost. Okay, I didn't know where, where it was at.
I'm thinking it's 15 or 16, but.
Okay.
Close area.
That, that, so, the first thing I know, go see Carl's mind, is, well, we owe $3,300, where are we gonna get the money? Well, and that's should be, but I, I think it's earmarked for that specifically, that we don't want.
Well, that allows us to pay that part out.
Yes, pay that out of there.
My incorrect, and the hospital has not set out any bills for so many years.
Right.
And not once they say, we need to pay this amount of money. But I think, from what I hear, there was a setup between the previous CEO and the sheriff on how it was supposed to be taken care of, is that correct?
I don't remember anything like that.
That's fire, I don't know, I could be wrong.
I know rumor was, before we ever had this meeting, that there's a $5,000 bill outstanding out there, which we've never been billed for. And then previously, since that meeting the other day, I, I got a copy of another thing that Jeff had got, that was, you know, a whole list of prisoners that totaled up to 250-something thousand. And a bunch of them have never been in our facility, or. So I don't know what, you know, they've got some problems in there, but most of these come through the ER, and usually in the evenings and nights, so. I don't know if they just assume a deputy brings them in, Ager County Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff, or even Sheriff's Department, so.
Some of them from the city, some are from the county, some are brought directly from the jail.
The city usually don't take anybody to the hospital, I mean, no.
Well, they bring them to you and let you pay them, right. That needs to get maybe a little bit enforced, I mean, I remember that in the old days.
City police bring people in, not where they come from, but.
Well, it doesn't matter where they come from, if an agency brings them in.
Well, the problem is, we've got so many habitual offenders, that, you know, you can set your watch, but, you know, we book them in at 10 o'clock, at 10:45, they're having a heart attack. You know, they go six weeks without having a heart attack, and the minute they're booked in again in six weeks, they have another heart attack, so. Or anxiety attack, or seizure, or.
I see it every night, like.
A nurse or a doctor that you call and evaluate, and then?
Well, I told Grandma I used to have, but we, we don't have it anymore.
We need something like that, that's, an emergency room's almost, is a thousand dollars.
That's $70,000, that's a $70,000 fee for that service.
That was that other service, but now you have that, uh, nurse that comes in, because within, what, the first so many days, you gotta have them booked by a medical person.
Yeah, she comes, I, I think she's there every night, or every, every other night.
You've got me a little concerned, you, you had me thinking, oh, we're talking about 3,500, and then you come up with 200 and some thousand.
Well, this is just another thing that they sent us, and I don't know when it was from, or. But right now, the, the one they're worried about's that $25,000 thing that amounts to about 3,300. I mean, that's the one they brought to our attention.
So what's the deal on the 200 and some thousand?
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, I mean, I think you're just, showed a bunch of them over the years, what it adds up to, and.
What they write off is basically what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's basically.
And like I say, a big part of them, well, for instance, one of the, the individual's bill was $22,000. Well, that individual has never even been in our facility.
So we're gonna get a bill for the 3,300 then, so they can pay it, and?
No, not if you're gonna take that off.
Well, I was on, I was on the big.
Oh, okay.
Well, how does that all fit in with those resolutions we did a few years ago?
We're still in a talking mode on all this.
Right.
Still in a talking mode with the hospital, with Jeff, and with Ollie on this. I mean, we can object to all we want, but we're still in the talking mode.
Jeff was telling me something that Medicare doesn't pay for emergency room now, where they used to, is, was that?
Well, the way I understood it, Ben, was.
Because the law changed them from there.
Yeah, and that there's, the state of Illinois, not necessarily Medicaid, will pick up a certain percentage of it. But I'll give you an example, I think it was, explain it to everybody. You bring in an inmate, let's call him inmate Smith, and you arrest him, you bring him in there, he's in there for two, three days, and he has appendicitis, okay, then Jeff takes him to the hospital, and they say, well, no, it's not appendicitis, it's a bellyache, or whatever, but incurs a $1,500 bill. Well, you submit it to Medicare, or Medicaid, let's say. Well, then all of a sudden Medicaid goes, we're not paying it. Well, then, then it comes back to us, or to that individual, well, it comes back to us because he's in custody. That's where you could easily get how many thousands of dollars accumulated. And the hospital, normally, that, like anybody else, if they're over there in jail, or living in McDonald's land, they can still get charged, and they don't pay it, they write it off. So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, maybe I'm assuming wrong, that that figure you're talking about, the big figure, was, is that scenario of all the ones that they billed for and not got paid for? And didn't necessarily they build the correct agency, they may even have built a private insurance company, a private insurance company says, bill's like, well, this guy's not insured by us, because he hadn't paid his premium, so it's back in your lap again.
They have raised what they're gonna pay, I mean, if you're gonna have surgery, you're on Medicare, hospital says it's $25,000 bill, well, if they get 18,000, the rest of it's written off. So that's probably what's happening out there, they're, they're gonna bill the maximum, but don't expect to get the maximum.
The thing is, that same person can walk in off the street 15 minutes, with intentions of never paying, but they can't refuse him. And the same way, if we take them in, they can't refuse him, but, you know, at least they can try to bill somebody and get something, so.
Talking about, you know, if a city brings a prisoner in that's injured, actually, we, if I remember right, statute says we don't have to accept them.
Right.
It's their responsibility to go get them medical treatment, and once they get medical treatment, then they can bring them back in, we accept them.
And I mean, that has happened in the past, they brought them in, and, and I can't think anything recently, but in the past, that. And not necessarily just coming in the doors makes them hard, but the city can bring them in, and they say, no, we're not taking them, take them to the hospital, get them checked out, and then bring them back.
Well, as Alan said, it's still in the parking base, and I don't know what we're saying, there's no.
Yeah, they haven't come out and asked us for any money yet, yet.
But they're, they're trying to get a procedure set up, all of you are, right?
My understanding.
Anything else?
The monthly meetings, you're gonna bring up about the monthly meetings, again, office holders, get that going?
Yeah, you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, um, one of the things that came out of the meeting we had last week, with Finance Committee, with Supervisor Assessments, is the need to get back together as office holders and department heads. And we used to do that pretty regularly, uh, once a month, out of the Cracken Building. And we're going to start that back up, so I'll be sending out an email to that effect. You know, email is okay, but you can't have a conversation through email. And, uh, there's been some good information that, there's been information that probably would have been flushed out, had we been sitting around the table discussing issues. And, uh, which I think would be a benefit for everybody. So we'll start that back up, and, uh, more on that, Carl, and you get that, that's basically it.
Because, you know, we do have, you know, like Jeff's new, you know, new office holder, you got the.
Sandy.
Sandy, new office holder, you got the new Supervisor Assessors. You know, that'd be a good thing, you know, they can get around and talk and learn a lot of things, and find out answers to their questions.
Good idea. Uh, Ben forwarded me a email, a week or so ago, from Landmarks, and those people that got us the grant to fix Lady Justice.
Right.
And they are conducting an economic impact study to see what that, how that's benefit our community. And, uh, they've subcontracted that out to a organization that's gonna send a few people to the area. And, um, Paris, Lawrenceville, Van Dallye, Eppingham, Toledo, Charleston, just to name a few. They're coming next, uh, Wednesday, February the 4th, at 8:30, to take a look at, uh, well, take a look at the restoration project, and to talk to anybody that's interested in talking to them on how that has impacted us economically. Is that pretty accurate, Ben? Ben has a conflict, uh, I'm gonna be out of town that day. Uh, we have, uh, asked Charlie Jared and Ned Jensen if they were interested. I've also emailed the mayor, uh, to see what he has to say, so. Anybody that's interested, uh, in talking with these people, uh, shouldn't take long, but they'll be at my office, uh, next Wednesday, February the 4th, at 8:30.
Chamber of Commerce, you might call them.
Thank you, I, I need to let them know.
The city manager.
Head coach, New Bob Calvin.
The, uh, take one of these and pass it down. The Beacon News contacted me about a, uh, a special that they're gonna run for four weeks, and I told her that I could not obligate the county to spend money for an ad in the newspaper. But basically, they have, uh, four sections. The first one is gonna be industry and government, and that, she, she asked if we would be interested in some form of an advertisement, uh, not so much historical information, but more, here's what we're doing now, um, here's what we plan to do, um, just to promote the county and various units of government and industry. Of course, you can see there are three other categories, health and religion, education, business, entertainment, and community service. So I promised her I would bring this to your attention this morning, and, uh.
We'd have to be pretty careful spending county money to tell everybody what, what we've done. That might be considered a political ad. Be my opinion.
I, I agree, but I told her I would pass along if anybody's interested. I think it's a fantastic idea, and if you're gonna get the judge's furnace fixed, and that old boiler seems to be sporadic down on the other level.
It's not old, by the way.
And that 25 grand has gone a long way.
That boiler's not old.
Or central air.
Yeah, I can probably roll for everybody.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, you're not.
Yeah, yes, I am.
Only way to go.
I might forget. Anybody have any questions for me?
You're just not exciting.
The border system can be made more efficient with controls in rooms on radiators, but now I think all you've got's manual valves.
The knob.
May I ask you a question, since you brought it up? That little knob? Thank you, I never heard that before.
When it doesn't work, it means the valve's probably broken.
I understand that. Is it true that it, I was told that it only has one, it's either open or closed. That's what it's, you can screw it up and down for, 'cause it, but I was told by our maintenance man that, that it, once it's.
You can't regulate the flow?
No, it's either open or closed. And if you don't open it all the way, the, the hot water comes in around this valve or seal, and that's why it leaks out on the floor like it does in our offices all the time.
Well, now, that part is right on, because it back, it backseals if you take it all the way out, but that's because the seal is not good on the valve.
Yeah. Well, that's the way I've done it the last four years, is I crack it open to get a little heat, and I shut it off, when I don't want any more heat, and it works fine.
You can, they can actually put thermostatic valves on there where that hand valve is, where you do it, or you, or they can have a thermostat that runs them, and you, you can make it more and more efficient that way, where, right now, they're talking, sounds like it just either hammer down, or, but, but you could be individually shut off and on.
Now, I also want to report that Jim Bennett was in, and has updated the electricity over in the election room. We, what do we call, when we're in election mode, and we're running a big ballot printer, and a copier, and everything else, and then someone comes in to microwave something, uh, we're, you know, we're tripping breakers all the time. And so Jim came in, and he separated some of that, so we should not have that problem anymore. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So the place isn't gonna burn down now?
I sure hope not. But I tell you, it did. But I tell you, it did fry a certain employee's Indiana University clock.
Oh, thank you.
Who's not too happy, so you're probably gonna see a bill in your next month.
Down at County Clerk's Office.
Yeah. We take care of the bills in the clerk's office.
Grant money will cover it.
There you go. Or an Indiana clock?
No.
Boyd clock, which is based on...
If there's, call me if you need me.
Does anybody have a reason for a closed session? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone...
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, I could, I said I'm... Your motion to second adjourn, all those in favor by the usual sign?
No, I agree.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, adjourned.
Maybe I'll get you a list of our county clerk's...
Notes that are all over.
I'll, I got some extras.
That's why I know where that is.
Brain work.
Well, maybe I wanna donate some money, have a personal...
A lot of times, just back in the white desk.
You actually reviewed those?
No, I said, just by the fact.
Right.
You did, I mean, the more times you can cross it into your senses on anything, the chances of storing it, it makes it more of an emotional issue, you don't have to...
Little bit of educational research there, Michael.
I know, and you're a highly educated man.
I don't know about that part.
Furnace, well, the whole thing.
That's...
I did inform anybody.